Welcome to the Revere City Council meeting for the meeting of March 25, 2019. Please join the city council in a salute to our flag.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morbeto.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch is absent, Counselor Powers.
Yeah.
Here, Counselor Rizzo. Here, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 11, 2019.
So moved. All favor, all opposed? So audited. Prior to the city council meeting, I would like to make a couple of statements. Once I received a call from Counselor Charlie Patch, again, he is not feeling well. He sends his apologies to the people of Revere and to the city council. Him and his son are not feeling that well, and we wish Charlie and his son a speedy recovery because our prayers are with him. Thank you. And next, we're going to have Counselor Woman Jessica Janino for point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, the city of Revere has lost a very well-respected and loved member of our community, retired Senior Deputy Chief George Tillery. George was a dedicated member of the Revere Fire Department where he served for most of his life. He also served our country and is a veteran. George was a very active retiree as a member of the credit union and also helped with the memorials that we do down the pines every year. And more than all of this, George was a very dear family friend. George is known my grandparents since they were in elementary school. He's my dad's godfather. And my family and I know the city is so deeply saddened by his loss, and our thoughts and our prayers are with his wife, Yvonne, and his children during this most difficult time. So at this time, I respectfully ask for a moment of silence in memory of retired Senior Deputy Chief George Tillery, a dear friend and beloved member of this community.
Please rise for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on the application of FS Barris Burke, manager of 109 Eustace Street, Revere, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to allow the current daycare preschool use to be changed to a professional office use at 283 Cushman Ave.
Good evening, Counselors.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown, LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the petitioner related to this special permit to convert a current daycare preschool use at 283 Cushman Ave, this is right across the street from the school, I'm sure you've seen it, into a real estate office, so a professional office. It is currently under contract for sale to be purchased by my client. It is contingent on this zoning. In looking at the property, in talking to people in the city, it seems like this would be a much more desirable use for this area, not having that in-and-out traffic that you get with a daycare use throughout the day, and having just a good, strong, professional office. The client, Barris Burke, expects to run it himself and have a few employees there who will be working just traditional business hours, nine to six or so. And just interested to get started in asking for your assistance in this special permit.
Thank you. Any other proponents, anyone speaking in favor, would like to speak, please come to the podium. Again, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Barbara Shea. I live at 3 Fenley Street in Revere. My property, the Kitty Coop. I guess I'm pro for it, yes, but I just have a couple of things I'd like to talk about to make sure that there's certain things that's going to stay the same and what's going to change or...
Well, for your edification and those in attendance and the city councilors, this is going to be referred to the zoning subcommittee, at which point we can speak all you want and ask any question you want. It's a pretty much informal situation, and I'm sure that the chair will allow you the leadway to ask any and all questions. If you have something in brevity that you'd like to just explain to us this evening, we can do that, but again, it's only going to be repeated again in zoning, so...
Well, just so that you'll be ready. They say that there's seven parking spots. I'm not really sure where the seven are, maybe four. The other thing would be the trees. There are trees on that property that are huge. But it's my property, 3 Fenley. But it's her property, 5 Fenley. There's one so big that when the wind blows, we're always afraid that one's coming down. So that would be another thing that we're worrying, you know. We just want to make sure it's not going to go up.
Okay. Now, these are certainly the types of questions that should be answered and you should get a satisfactory answer. And by the way, when it goes to Ways and Means, that's just another session which you go through, but that comes back to the council with the finding from the Ways and Means Committee.
Okay.
So when they make a determination, excuse me, not Ways and Means, zoning.
Zoning.
I'm sorry, zoning. So when it goes, when you get their information and you get it from the source, meaning the attorney or those that are applying for it, you let us know if you're not satisfied at the zoning subcommittee, and those members will bring it forward to the council, the whole.
And when do we find out when the zoning committee is?
The zoning subcommittee, zoning person, when does the next meeting, next two meetings will be?
Will be before our next meeting.
April 8 is our next regular council meeting, so at what particular time, Mr. Chairman?
5:00.
5:00 on April 8 in this council chamber and is called as zoning subcommittee.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Anyone in the audience wishing in opposition? Any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, now close that side of the hearing. Any councilors wishing to speak, bearing in mind this is going to the zoning subcommittee. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a point of information. I was just told that there's no picture on cable right now, so they can hear us, but they can't see us.
Okay.
So there's some sort of disconnect through Revere TV.
Okay, we're working on that problem as we speak. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, and I understand this is going in zoning subcommittee. If Corey could just briefly explain, do you intend on changing the property profile much, or is that going to be just kept the same?
No, this is literally where the daycare use was going on inside the building. It'll now be an office use, no exterior changes, other than I think making the parking lot more useful, but no expansions, no, it's not going up, no exchanges to the structure.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent.
All right, that sounds good.
Counselor Zambudo?
I think that would probably be more convenient for the neighborhood as well.
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, zoning subcommittee.
Yes, the free cash appropriations have been approved.
Next auditor business.
Calendar item number four, this is the zoning subcommittee report.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, the second item was various transfers from free cash to enterprise funds and stabilization
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the zoning committee met this evening at 4:30. However, it was a brief meeting due to the fact that the city solicitor could not attend
funds. So the first one, I don't know if we need to vote on these separately.
due to a death in the family, so we're going to take that up at the next meeting.
I think we do.
Okay. The first one is a transfer to the stabilization general fund from the general fund free cash
So that remains in committee, the ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
certification as of June 30, 2018, in the amount of $919,133.
So this will refer it back to the zoning subcommittee for further finding.
Next is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
On the request of the Chair of Ways and Means, roll call. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The council, members of the council, members of the subcommittee approved on the transfers
Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
in its entirety and recommended it to the city council for an affirmative vote.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
This is, shall the city council approve the free cash appropriations as reported by
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent.
the city auditor?
Counselor Zambudo?
A roll call is in order.
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, the general fund stabilization transfer has been approved. On the motion, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Chairman Rizzo.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
The next item was a transfer to the water sewer enterprise fund stabilization account.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
This is from the water sewer enterprise fund free cash certification as of June 30,
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
2018, $428,846 to the water sewer enterprise stabilization fund.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Roll call is in order.
Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer to the water and sewer stabilization fund has been approved.
Mr. Chairman.
And the third and final transfer is to the capital improvement stabilization fund from free cash certification general fund, June 30, 2018, to the capital improvement stabilization fund in the amount of $1,225,511.
Roll call is audited.
On the motion, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the general fund stabilization transfer has been approved.
Chairman Rizzo.
The next item was a transfer to the water sewer enterprise fund stabilization account. This is from the water sewer enterprise fund free cash certification as of June 30, 2018, $428,846 to the water sewer enterprise stabilization fund.
Roll call is in order.
Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer to the water and sewer stabilization fund has been approved.
Mr. Chairman.
And the third and final transfer is to the capital improvement stabilization fund from free cash certification general fund, June 30, 2018, to the capital improvement stabilization fund in the amount of $1,225,511.
Roll call is audited.
On the motion, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the capital improvement stabilization fund transfer has been approved.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I think this is the last transfer that you guys have, or that was the last transfer.
I believe it is, yes.
I just wanted to thank the council on the city's behalf and on all the organizations that are going to be positively impacted by the appropriations and the requests that were put before you. I want to thank the Ways and Means Committee for turning around a quick timeline and making sure that these appropriations could happen. They are certainly going to benefit our residents and the quality of life for our residents and our students, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just before the meeting, the city of Revere City Council's Appointment Subcommittee met. There were two appointments on our agenda this evening, and they were both reappointments. The first was that of Caruso Corporation as a licensed drain layer. The second was for Mercurio Brothers as a licensed drain layer. Both of these will be reported out favorably, and I ask that if there are no objections, we can take them up together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair President. Roll call.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairwoman Janino? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbeto.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo. Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number nine, communication from the city clerk requesting a Chapter 148 license revocation hearing for license number 606 and 629.
Audited to a public hearing on April 22.
Calendar item number 10, communication from Rocco Falzoni, 55 Tuscano Ave, relative to various issues on Asti and Tuscano Aves.
Mr. Falco, Zoni.
I didn't think I was going to need it, but if I get loud, you have to understand why I'm going to get loud. Rocco Falzone, 55 Tuscano Ave, RVMS. This is my letter to you, President Guanasso. To Council Chamber President Arthur Guanasso, topic unfinished business pertaining to Ward 6, council member at large, Jessica Janino, Dan Rizzo, Charlie Patch. Counselor 2, Ivan Novoselski. Ward 6 has deteriorating streets on Asti Ave, Tuscano Ave. After it rains, water pools become an incubator for mosquito larvae on Asti Ave. Illegal sidewalks, massive unnecessary flooding for 29 years causing retaining wall to collapse on 55 Tuscano Avenue. That's my house. Asti Ave looks like a resko dump as DC Act does nothing to clean up the trash. Going on two years, why as I, a taxpayer, and I am not receiving any help? Now, I'm here tonight, it'll be a year next month that I'm coming up here, besides the year presenting my problem with all your city council members, here's another issue. The issue pertaining tonight is that I'm here to speak directly to your TV audience. President Guanasso, you said the right thing when you were sworn in at your ceremony. We, as city council members, are in a major city which is called Revere, Massachusetts, have to come to our senses. And the best thing, in my opinion, was back in 1996, there was no TV. But in the present today, there's a lot of television, a lot of people are tuning in to watch you guys present a major city called Revere, Massachusetts. And for the year I've been sitting there and listening to all yous talk, when you come out and say, "We have to start acting like nitwits because we're on television", that was the best thing that you could ever say. So thank you for sharing that with me and your television audience. Now, as I continue, Ivan Novoselski, listen, we've had words in the past, and I just want to make one point straight. As far as I know, till this day, and I'm sure Arthur Guanasso, President, you might help me out, when you guys were sworn in, is it 24/7 service to the people that put you in office? Is there any stipulations, any time limits, any afternoon, evenings, days, nights? Is there any situations where we're not allowed to call and tell problems what's going on, whether it's Ward 6, Ward 2, Ward 4, whatever it is?
Mr. Falzoni.
Yes, sir.
Any responsible person has the right to call a city councillor or any elected official in the city of Revere. Any reasonable person will keep it to hours of really realistic terms.
Okay, I can understand.
So if you get angry, or a citizen gets angry at 2:00 in the morning, and I'm going to tell that councillor what I think, that's inappropriate.
Okay, I can understand.
So if the, and sometimes throughout the week, we as individuals, our councilors, we're human, we have human problems also.
Okay.
So sometimes it's maybe not convenient to get back to you right away.
Okay.
So with that said, and I want to keep this as brief as possible because this is not a situation where we can discuss what councilors think and do. But in defense of these city councilors, and you made a statement about 1996 viewing, they've been viewing it since 1986, and it's been on Colonial TV, 1986. So we've been viewed for many, many years, and our conduct has always been to the best interests of the community. Now, do we have exceptions with some councils? Possibly we do. I mean, some, you know, that's the way life goes, but I don't think it's any disrespect that's being offered out by any council member to any resident. So I think what we do is we do the best thing we possibly can. Now, what you're dealing with, we've already dealt with you on this issue, and DCR and MasDART already has the information that the city of Revere, through its councilors, have told them. Now, it's in their hands, in the best interests of them and you as a citizen, to get this corrected. But this city council did not put this aside. I was impossible to every meeting that we're here at the city council. It was attended to as, we're limited too. We're limited too. We have our hands tied in certain issues too. So we just can't go and dictate to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, "You get over here and do this." We have to go according to terms that they're aware of, and so, and that's what the conditions we work under. We work under the same conditions as you would work under, but only the system works as, rather than have 40,000 citizens call these agencies, we have elected 11 people up here who act as their representatives. And that has been done on your behalf. And there's been, and you mentioned councilors outside of Ward 6 and at large, there have been some councilors that did also offer their help too. So you've been getting the help from the city of Revere. Whether it's to your satisfaction, it seems like it's not. But that's all we can say, and I can refer this over back to a committee, but I don't see to what advantage that's going to be, because we can't do anything more than we've already done. So we suffer your experience, and we understand, and there's a lot of things going on in this city that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts be attending to, that we're trying to work with them, but we can't dictate to them.
The question of dictating to anybody, that was not my premise here tonight. My reason why I'm talking to all of you guys again, and I do respect the situations that you put yourselves in by representing a major city in Revere, and this, I would like to recognize.
Counselor?
Please don't use councilors' names, that's against the...
Okay, all right. There's a few people I want to recognize here, but I was told to watch my mouth, and I intend to. So with that said, and what you understood, 29 years have gone by, half of my life is wasted living on that corner from 55 to Tuscano Ave. That is no excuse why things can't be done. If this was straightened out 29 years ago, I would not be up here wasting your time, my time, nobody's time. But this has gone on too long. What you, I would love, I come up here, I was going to rip three guys apart here, but I was told to watch my mouth.
Well, sir, to be honest with you, I wouldn't allow that, so...
And it's not going to work. When I came up here last year, I presented myself, I was a gentleman, I'm not here to cast any stones, I'm not here to do anything for anybody. But as the year go by, sitting on that, watching you guys perform, you know, some of the messages that we're getting and the TV audiences getting that, it's a power struggle between a few, a few councilors. That's the message that we're receiving and the city of Revere is receiving. That's the message that's going on.
Well, that's not the perception that I see here happening. I think individual councilors work very, very hard for their constituents.
I understand that, I know that.
And they're not struggling one against the other. We work as a team, and we work pretty damn good as a team, and I'm very proud of them. And I've served with them for, some of them for several years, and they've done a good job. I think you've just got to look outside what's taking place here. We've done a lot of great things in our city in the last 20 years, and...
I'm sure you have.
And we've been stuck with decrees by $100 million, and we're working with it, and we just, you just, we just showed testimony that we gave our free cash tonight. That's a wonderful thing doing for your city. We're not looking for overrides in any program. Our schools are being built better than any in the state, so I think we're doing a pretty good job for our community.
I'm sure you are.
And there are things, like I said before, that we wish we could attend to and get corrected, but we can't, and we have to work with others, and that's the way it is. So, I mean, share no fault with any of these people here. These people are hard, dedicated. I work with them. I work with them, and I know how hard they work, and some of us go to committee, meetings, meetings, meetings. It's not, TV audiences, residents that they, that voted for them don't even know they go to. There's a lot of service being provided by this council.
Okay.
And I feel very strongly, the Revere City Council is very, very well-represented, and I think the people of Revere should be proud of that.
I am.
And that's the tone I'd like you to stay, you know, work with us, not against us.
I have, I have no problem working with yous.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
I've been here for a year, listening to what's going on.
I know, I see that.
And I'm still in the same boat as I was back in 1996. Nothing's being done. Now, the reason why what I'm doing here tonight is, I just found out, I was livid. Let me tell you what I found out. Inspection services were never notified for the problem on Asti and Tuscano Ave. When I heard that, I was livid. Counselor McKenna said I'm right.
No names, please.
There was no communication. She made it a point, and I understood that. There's no communication between nobody up here. Counsel, Counselor?
Well, that's the way you perceive it, and I think...
That's the way I see it.
I think that this has gone far enough along. I think that the city council's paid a lot of attention to you, sir. I think we've done as much as we possibly can to a certain degree, and I want the city council to feel assured that, you know, I'm not going to continue on with this conversation based on the fact that you've done, you've stated your point, you feel very frustrated with a situation that's not being attended to, you felt that the inspectional services wasn't notified. Okay, all those things happened in the past, and unfortunately, now you know they weren't notified, I don't know for the life of me how they weren't notified, but that's the way it is. Counselor Novoselski. And I'm not going to allow this to go on any too long, this is going to take its course. We've done what we can for this gentleman. We've done more for him and heard more of his concern than any private citizen in the last five years. So we've worked with you. We haven't worked against you. Counselor Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you, Rocco. A year ago, when he was up here, was in front of my committee, and I did my best to get the Public Works staff, DPW staff...
I know you did.
...the state MasDART staff, DCR staff, down to Tuscano Ave. The State MassDOT staff, DCR staff, down to Tuscany Ave. We all met there on a morning, a nice morning, may I say, and we walked around and we saw the issues. Now, since then, I can tell you that Donnie Charamello from DPW has been constantly cleaning out that ditch, going down from Tuscany, along Asti Ave, down to the State Creek. He doesn't have to do that because it's not our property, but he took it upon himself to do it. So, I know our staff is doing their job as far as they can. Now, as far as the damage in your property, I don't know about that. You know, you're claiming it's from the water? I don't know that either. But I would think, right now, the next move, and he may even say that Representative Vincent was even there with her staff, and she, it's a state problem. You have to be in touch. She's your representative. She is the one that you have to speak to to get DCR and MassDOT. Now, I know the MassDOT guys from District 4 are along that highway, cleaning out from the, from the guardrails down to the creek on a regular basis. I've seen the trucks there, I've seen the guys down there, and I've spoken to the supervisor. They do their best they can. Now, they can't help people driving along dumping things out of their cars. They do the best they can when they get notified of it. But we have done our job. You can't say that we haven't done anything for two years because we have.
I did not say that.
You wrote it right here, sir.
All right. Point to Vincery.
I could see where this is going.
I just, I just say, you ought to take it higher than us.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Morabito.
Would it be too much to ask if we can just send, have a city clerk send a letter to the State Department, see what the update is, and leave it at that, and then get back to him?
We can do that, councillor, but you know what? We've been doing that right along, and we've been working with them. It isn't like this communication is going someplace and saying, "Well, we're unveiling something we haven't done."
Oh, I completely understand.
And Donnie Charamello, the time he was up here, and he made such a great presentation of what he had done, and his people in cleaning that area, that was over and above the call of responsibility of our city. And I, and I feel kind of saddened that you didn't take that as pride for your community, that these people are going out there, doing it, performing a service to satisfy a resident in an area that we have no jurisdiction over. That's a, that's a major situation, and you're saying that we haven't done anything. Well, I beg to differ with it, and I call this conversation over because we've already dealt with that. And I, and I feel very, very saddened that you feel disrespected in any way, and you feel angry in any way, because you have a situation that's uncomfortable, and there's no question about it, there's no one going to deny that. But, you know, don't blame the fault, put the fault on people for not doing what they're supposed to do, because we've done everything we can, except clean up and correct the problem, because we don't know how to do that. We don't have the expertise. But hopefully, we will reach out again, on your behalf, and we will reach out to the Speaker, we will reach out and ask if he can help us along with the representative who serves you, Rosalie Vincent.
Rosalie Vincent is my communication with Ricky Serino. I've been working with them for a year. And I, when Ricky Serino announced he was running for Ward 6, he made my whole day. What we need in the city of Revere is young blood. We need people with fire in their belly. We need, we need...
Well, I don't know how many, many young people have as much fire in their belly as I do, sir, and I appreciate you coming to the podium, and thank you for the conversation.
Well, to all of you's TV audience, this is the beginning, not done yet.
Okay. Next. Place that on file, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Raphael Construction as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Arm Construction as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Miola Construction as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of James T. Lynch Construction as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of McGrath Enterprises as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
It looks like 16 is a duplicate.
Okay.
Submittal by the mayor's office, but, because that, again, was for Raphael Construction.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 17, communication from the mayor relative to the Massachusetts Historic Commission Grant Application.
Shall the city council approve the resolution for the Massachusetts Historic Commission Matching Grant Application? And the city clerk will read the resolution.
Resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for the Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund for the construction and improvements to the Revere Society for Cultural and Historic Preservation Museum, whereas Revere Society for Cultural and Historic Preservation Museum is a community-wide asset, and improvements to the Revere Museum is a priority as evidenced in the need to preserve the artifacts and heritage of Revere. And whereas Revere Society for Cultural and Historic Preservation currently is under preservation restriction, and whereas the renovation of the exterior of the facility will greatly enhance recreational pursuits at this facility, and whereas the Massachusetts Historical Commission is offering a one-to-one dollar match as a reimbursable grant to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of historically significant facilities, and whereas the Revere Historical Society for Cultural and Historic Preservation Museum Exterior Renovation Project is estimated to cost a total of $225,000, of which $100,000 will be reimbursed to the city if the grant is awarded. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the city of Revere, and this resolution shall take effect upon its passage.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novosowski.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch is absent, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
Mr. Upton.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Bob Upton, I'm the newly-elected president of the Revere Society for Cultural and Historic Preservation, and I would like to speak on behalf of our organization, our members that are here with us this evening. We'd like to thank the city council, so like to thank the mayor of Revere and members of the staff of the city that have worked vigorously and tirelessly with us to prepare this grant application. And without this vote, we would not even be able to submit our application, and it's with great hope and anticipation that we can be approved with that. Our organization has committed our portion for the grant, along with the city. Hopefully, we can be successful in preserving that building at 108 Beach Street, which is known as the Revere Historical Museum. We have lots of artifacts, a lot of rich history in this city, as many of you know. With the Rumney Marsh Burial Ground as part of that organization, this museum and that burial ground and many of the historical sites in the city can be greatly promoted, preserved, and appreciated by our citizenry. And I really appreciate the support of the city. Thank you so much.
And we thank you for taking on the responsibility and the job that you, we know how you are and what you are all about, and you are all about Revere, so they couldn't select a better person.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Congratulations to you and your group.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by councillors Janino and Keith, that the following zoning amendment be ordered to a public hearing relative to towers and telecommunications facilities.
Order to a public hearing on April 22nd.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by councillor Zambudo, that the mayor be requested to establish an emergency fund for CAPIC.
All in favor, all opposed? Am I clear the motion, councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President, just briefly. I put this in as a, as you know, CAPIC serves three communities, Revere, Chelsea, and Winthrop. And the others, the others have this established fund. Right now, CAPIC is servicing the fire victims of Thornton Street, as they do in any situation like such as tragedy, like a fire, they support the residents. This is a fund that will be replenished every year, relatively, considering the amount of money we passed out tonight. This is a, this is a pittance, this is $60,000 a year. So, this is, this is asking for $60,000 now, and then $60,000 a year in the future. So, that's what this is about, and these are, these are the funds that help people that are really in need. And so, that's why I put this in.
I agree with that. Last week...
I know we can't appropriate money, however, I'm asking the mayor, and we've already discussed it, of course, and I look forward to this happening quickly.
Thank you, councillor Zambudo. I know, last week, I was acting mayor for a couple of days, and unfortunately, we had a fire on Thornton Street, and I was notified right away that Red Cross and CAPIC were right on the scene. So, I was made, you know, I was aware that they were there, and the presidents were there to relocate the 18 people who were displaced by the fire, and everybody working together shows that the body's working, that the community's working, and we're working on behalf of its citizens. So, at that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President?
Mister, councillor Rizzo.
Could I speak on this motion?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to follow, I think this is an excellent motion. You know, we've had several recent tragedies, whether they be fires or other natural disasters, where, you know, CAPIC, to me, has just gone above and beyond what they were originally, you know, what the original inception of CAPIC was supposed to be, they've kind of morphed into a catch-all for whether it be homelessness, you know, tragedies such as fires, you know, people displaced for other reasons. And I just, I just want to publicly say, their executive director, Barbara Pucci, and his very capable staff from top to bottom, does their very best to help people in their utmost times of need. So, I think this is a great motion. I know councillor Zambudo has worked tirelessly with that organization. I've worked with them, you know, directly when we need things. Councillor Zambudo has worked with them along the way, whether we need things or not, and so I think this is an excellent motion. I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rizzo. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was a teacher, we had homeless kids, and we didn't know how to help them, and we'd call CAPIC, and CAPIC would come through with money, and they would find emplacement. When we had the storm in March 2018, we had 5 and 1/2 feet of water at Pearl Ave, and a 90-year-old woman was displaced for like three months. CAPIC came in with $10,000, got a local, I think it was 25, to come in, and they offered their services, and this woman had all new services, a furnace, boiler, and she got back into her house. So, I am, I love this organization, and I, whatever they need, I will be in, I'll be in assistance. And I just want to say thank you to councillor Zambudo for putting this motion through. Thank you.
Councillor Morabito.
Thank you. I agree with councillor Ian Rizzo when he said, "CAPIC goes above and beyond." They really do. They really help people maintain self-sufficiency through so many programs, not only just with home energy assistance, but they also do have programs such as crisis intervention with domestic violence. So, think, you know, having a little emergency fund would be, I think this is a great motion, and I think we should do our part to help them out, give them a little cushion for emergency assistance, because we, I'm sure everyone on this council can vouch for them and say they go, they do their part, we should do ours.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, over the last nine months, Shirley Ave area has had three major fires, and we're talking close to 100 people between the three fires. And I can honestly say that Barbara Pucci picked up the phone, and he's there before you even hang up. We've already honored him, and we could honor him many more times if we had to. But I know CAPIC, you know, their funding in many areas has been cut, and that's why it's good that the cities and towns that they service are helping out, and I think this is a great sign that we appreciate what Bob's been doing and the organization's been doing over the years, and especially in the last nine months. And I think it's a great thing that councillor Zambudo is putting forth for us tonight, and I thank him for it.
Thank you, councillor Novosowski. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't think of anyone in city government or state government that has been more responsive to the needs of the people in the city of Revere and the area I represent. Anytime I've called Barbara Pucci, call back within 15, 20 minutes. I can't think of a better way to spend $60,000 than to give it to Barbara Pucci for his programs, and I can say now with a great degree of certainty that the monies that come back from CAPIC far exceed $60,000 in service in dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for the leeway. I just wanted to correct a statement from my colleague from Ward 1. CAPIC did assist in that woman greatly, but I B W, the electrical workers, through our good friend Louis Cheroloni, we were able to get that $10,000 worth of electrical work done for that woman to get her back in the house, so I wanted to give a shout-out to them, because without them, we wouldn't have been able to do that. CAPIC doesn't have those kind of funds on here. But Ian, I think councillor Rizzo said it, but we all, and you said it, Mr. President, we all work together here, and I've been on the CAPIC board for almost 20 years.
I know that.
And I'm probably the only conservative to ever be on a board like that and learn what good that organization does, from anything you call with a crisis for a constituent. And believe me, the Speaker calls them, everybody calls Barbara Pucci for help, we all do. But there, he's always there, he never says no, he always finds a way, and this emergency fund really will go a long way to helping people that are in desperate need, be it homeless people or people that are just a little short on their rent, or whatever it might be, or a fire victim. But this is something that will be there all the time, and when he picks up that phone and says, "Yeah, I'll be there," he'll also have the resources to be there. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, councillor, because certainly, we all know the good works of CAPIC, and led by Barbara Pucci, who's a very kind, considerate man, and knows the needs of the individuals, and he does it willingly. He does it because he enjoys doing it, and I applaud each and every one of you who reach out to Bob, and every time we have him in need. And we certainly have a lot of times that we do need his service, and again, applause to him, and anything we can do to help CAPIC, we're glad to do so. Madam Clerk? No further business. The city council is standard adjourned until the meeting of April 8th at 6:00. Thank you for your attendance.